Greetings, everyone, as you make your way into the Zoom meeting. We'll give people a few more seconds to come in. It looks like we have. I think everyone's making their way in. I can see people connecting. All right. Well, why don't we start off the meeting, Zoe, if you want to put us back into gallery mode, I guess they call it? Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I am Laura Singer and I am working with the State of Maine and Consensus Building Institute here and will be facilitating our conversation this afternoon. If you're not sure which Zoom meeting you're in, this is the Maine Offshore Wind Discussion about wildlife. It's a wildlife work session that is part of the research array that the state is exploring. And I just wanted to go through a few housekeeping things first. If we were doing this in person, this is where I would tell you where the bathrooms are. But we're not doing it in person. We're on Zoom. So if you want to put up Zoe, the first slide. And we can just walk through. I know many of you after almost a year are probably very familiar with Zoom, but some of you might not be. And we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate. So if you'd please mute yourself. I think we have about 100 people that registered. There are about 60 or so of you on now. If you're on the phone, you use star six to mute and unmute yourself. What we're going to ask everyone to do, this is a working session. So we are looking to as much as possible with the number of people we have to really have a dialogue and a discussion about what we know about the the area of interest that's been identified, what we know about the wildlife, both above the ocean in terms of birds and bats, and what we know about the wildlife below the ocean, which is primarily marine mammals and some other critters. I'll talk a little bit more about the process, but there is another working group that will be focusing specifically on fishing and fisheries. And obviously, there's crossover and we will be working throughout the process for that crossover. But so for this, for our meeting today, we'll have breakout groups in the afternoon. And what I'd like everyone to do is to rename yourself and you go down, you show yourself in the participants list. If you click on that, you should be able to see where your name is and you can rename yourself under, if you go under more, it allows you to rename yourself. I'm just going to try to do it myself. And then put in either BB, if you want to be in the Birds and Bats breakout this afternoon, then your name and affiliation, or MM and your name and affiliation, if you want to be in the Marine Mammals breakout. If you can go ahead and do that whenever you have an opportunity, that will give Zoe, who is our technical assistant today, the ability to then put you into those breakout groups for the afternoon. So and I'll remind you a little bit later again to do that. And if you have problems with anything, you can either chat, which is at the bottom of your screen. If you pull down to the bottom, you'll see the little chat chat icon with a little speaker. Use the chat function to ask questions of any of us, whether it's on the content or if you want to chat with Zoe and if you're having a technical assistance issue. The other thing you can do is just email Zoe directly, if that's an issue as well. So we encourage you to use the chat function to ask questions and share information. When we get to the time for a conversation, there's a raise hand function in Zoom. And if you could do that, again, in the participants list, there's a little raise hand there. Or if you're on the phone, press star nine. If you want to just try to raise your hand on the screen, I will do my best to try to make sure I can see people, but using that little tab is the best way to see everybody. Next slide, please. So in terms of navigating our conversation for today, I would just ask everyone that will be attentive to today's objectives. We are going to be focusing on the looking at the data that we have available for the wildlife in this area of interest and and seeing what that tells us about areas of focus. Please, as much as possible, I know in the Zoom world, it's hard not to multitask and read your emails, but again, for the purpose of trying to stay focused and have a good conversation, please try to avoid multitasking. We will have an opportunity for a break and Amanda will go through the agenda with us. Both comments and questions are welcome. Please do listen to learn. There will be a lot of information sharing here today, which is terrific and speak absolutely to share your expertise, whether it's in data, if you're coming from a scientific perspective, or observations, if you're coming from a more natural perspective and what you've seen on the water that will help inform decision making moving forward. Always share the floor so we can be mindful of our time, or a lot of us. Be direct and respectful and the session will not be recorded. The session actually will be recorded up until the break. So we have some speakers and then it won't be recorded when we're in the breakout sessions. Next slide. So I just wanted to orient people a little bit to where we are in the research array process. Where the orange arrow is, we're in the work sessions for the fish. There's both, as I mentioned, a fisheries and a wildlife. What we've tried to do is set up multiple ways for people to engage in the conversation about where to site the 16-square-mile research array. And coming up, Selena will give us more background about that, but we've tried, we did a state of the knowledge workshop early on in December. We are building in webinars across lots of different topics around offshore wind. There's lots for all of us to learn in Maine and the Gulf of Maine. And so we're trying to build in webinars. We had one last week on floating offshore wind technology. We're going to have another one in a few weeks on actually cabling and how that works. And now we're working on these work sessions with both fisheries and wildlife. We'll also have an opportunity for some informal dockside conversations as part of the process and a joint workshop with both the wildlife and the fisheries working group. So that's just an overview of the overall approach to get to a research lease application for the research array. And next slide, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda. Amanda Cross is the Wildlife Resources Supervisor for Maine Inland Fish and Wildlife, and she's been working on on collecting the information that will help inform sighting from the wildlife side. So Amanda?
Great. Thank you, Laura, for the introduction. And it's wonderful to see so many interested folks here today. As Laura outlined, these work sessions are intended to be a deep dive into the wildlife data sets and information that are needed to inform this research project. The discussions we have here today and in the future work sessions will help inform three project decision areas. The sighting of the research project and its configuration, the research themes of interest that could be addressed through this project, and any other relevant elements of design that need to be considered. You all are here today because of your expertise, your interest, your experience, and your knowledge of wildlife, from marine mammals to seabirds, and we want to hear what you have to say. The work session today and those coming up are designed to be collaborative, open dialogues to help identify the most pressing issues that we need to consider as we design this research project and also help us identify opportunities to fill in gaps and means wildlife data sets. Your consistent participation in these working sessions will help inform this research project with the best information available. Next slide, please, Zoe. So obviously, we can't cover everything in one session. So we've broken down our discussions into several work sessions over the coming months. So today, we'll focus on our knowledge of wildlife in the project area of interest. So what spatial data, what other types of data do we have that are available for this region of the Gulf of Maine? What's missing? How do we get this information? And finally, as time allows today, we'll discuss approaches for identifying areas of potential high interactions, moderate interactions, and potentially low interaction areas for wildlife to be considered within the project area. That's that first rectangle you can see on your left here on the screen. For our next session, put it on your calendars, March 26, we'll be hearing more from the Fisheries Work Sessions and some of their considerations. And we'll talk more specifically about sighting areas. We'll also then take a dive into considerations of layout, configuration, and for reducing potential interactions with wildlife. And we'll also begin our deeper discussion of key research questions that we hope to answer during the lifetime of this project. In between these two sessions, there'll be opportunities to contribute additional information and ideas through a few key channels that we'll discuss in more detail during the breakout sessions, as well as at the end of the meeting. And then finally, we're planning joint work sessions with the Fisheries Group that Laura talked about to identify those intersecting themes that are common among both of our groups that pertain to sighting and project design. And those meetings will be announced as we finalize dates. Next slide, please, Zoe. Okay, so for today, here are our objectives. We have three of them. The first one, to set our expectations and goals for the working sessions. The second one, understand what data is available to determine which wildlife species are present in the research area with a focus on those species that are likely to be most vulnerable. And then third, finally, to generate ideas for additional data sets that should be included to inform the sighting of this project. Next slide. Thanks. So this is our agenda for today. This is how we'll accomplish those three objectives. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Selena Cunningham, Deputy Director of the Governor's Energy Office, to provide us with an overview of Bean's Offshore Wind Research Array. Then from two to three, we'll hear from two subject experts, Wing Goodall and Sophie Van Paris, on the information that we have for birds, bats, and marine mammals and some other critters that are in this region. Following each presentation, there'll be time for questions and answers. Then we'll take a short break, bio break, coffee break, and then we'll come back together to go into our two breakout groups. At that time, if you haven't already indicated which group you would like to go to, make sure Zoe will connect with you to direct you into the right place. So you're not hanging out here in the plenary. We'll spend about 45 minutes in the breakout sessions and have some good thoughtful, deep discussions there. Then we'll regroup at four for a report out from each breakout group. Then we'll talk about next steps, action items, and we'll get you out of here by 4:30. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Selena to tell us more background information on the project.
Thanks, Amanda, and welcome, everyone. Glad to be here today. Turn to the next slide. So just want to briefly spend a few minutes to provide a little bit of background for those who are joining us for perhaps the first time to hear about what we are doing here in offshore wind and with the proposed floating offshore wind research array. The state has set ambitious climate and clean energy requirements that we've been working to meet, and we will be required to need more electricity and clean renewable energy sources. Offshore wind is one of those, and so that is why we're continuing to pursue the best way to responsibly bring offshore wind to the state of Maine. Next slide. We are lucky to have great offshore wind resources. We also have a lot of potential when it comes to shoreside employment and port support that could go into our offshore wind industry. Also, in the state, we've been working on it for more than a decade with, across many different areas, including the University of Maine and their their work on floating technology. And so together, we are taking a look about how to do this in the right way. We also understand that we, you know, we're also mindful of the incredibly important fishing industry here in Maine. And so all of our efforts, we're thinking about how to maximize opportunities for coexistence and minimize impacts to not only fishing industry, but obviously the marine environment and wildlife. Next slide. So we're doing that in a few ways. One is that we have a, we received federal funding to put forward a stakeholder-driven process to develop a roadmap for our long-term strategy of how best to advance offshore wind in the state. That effort is, will be launched soon in terms of next, in the spring, to begin the stakeholder process of mapping out what are our opportunities when it comes to manufacturing, supply chain, workforce, ports and infrastructure, as well as our ocean and environmental data needs overall. So that will, you'll hear more from us there, but the work of the research array will become part of that structure going forward. We're doing these work sessions in advance of the launch of the roadmap, but the work will continue in that structure going forward after the research lease application is submitted. Next slide. In terms of projects, we're taking a phased approach, given that we will due to the water depths will likely require floating technology here in Maine, which is there is not yet any floating projects in the US, although there are a few examples worldwide. And so in the University of Maine, among others, have done a lot of investment and innovation in terms of designing floating platforms. You can see the picture of University of Maine's proposed 2023 project there that's on track for one turbine project off of Monhegan Island in state waters. And we are here today, obviously, to talk about the research array. The state sees a real opportunity in terms of advancing offshore wind, but we want to make sure that we get the right information in order to to really minimize any potential impacts and obviously create a unique opportunity to build jobs here in Maine. And the University of Maine floating platform is uniquely designed to be able to be fabricated and constructed here. So we're proposing this project here. And then we are also working more broadly with our regional partners on potential future commercial large-scale projects, although that is early stages and nothing is planned or no timeline developed yet. Next slide. This just gives you a visual of the floating technology that we'll be talking about. I'll also flag that we had a interesting webinar recently on the different aspects of floating technology. So I encourage you, we'll be putting up the recording on our website shortly. So feel free to check that out if you want to learn more about the technology yourself. Next slide. So the proposed project will be in federal waters. It'll contain 12 turbines or fewer and cover 16 square miles or 16 square miles or smaller. Next slide. And our partners, the State of Maine, is leading this effort. The Governor's Energy Office, we're working very closely with our other agencies, including Department of Inland Fish and Wildlife. And then we are working with New England Aquaventis to joint venture between Diamond Offshore Wind and RWE, as well as the University of Maine and working closely with our federal and state agencies to coordinate on throughout this process. Next slide. In terms of the overall timeline, we are in the earlier phases of development here, planning on where to put this project and some basic design elements. We'll submit an application this year and hope to have something in the water within five years or so. Next slide. And earlier this year, the governor announced her intent to support a 10-year moratorium in state waters. And this was in response to some feedback that we received from the fishing industry and others about concern about large-scale projects in near-shore waters. And so the governor articulated her priority is to focus on federal waters, particularly this research array, but also just to emphasize that that's our area of focus and we will be putting forward this work with the legislature on the moratorium itself and also take a look at applicable state laws when it comes to offshore wind resources. Next slide. So where are we putting this, citing this project? The state has put forward some basic sighting criteria. I won't read it out loud. You can see it here. And then go to the next slide, actually. This is a visual of the area that we have identified. We know that there are existing conflicts in the area. So this is what we really want to do today is to use your input and data to help us have a better idea of what is happening out there when it comes to wildlife and how we can choose and identify a location that will have as least impact as possible. Next slide. And the process that we're going forward is obviously working with you in terms of obtaining data, going through getting available data and then continuing to have conversations with the fishing industry and other stakeholders to support a final decision by the state in terms of the site selection. Next slide. Next slide. And research is a fundamental piece and will be of this entire project, and it's shaping every aspect of it from where we are citing it to how we will design it. And so we will work through these work sessions to ensure that the general research themes in the initial application align with the goals of Maine and the community writ large to make sure that we're getting the most out of this project. Next slide. And those are a few of the general areas that we're looking, but we're spending some time diving into what we need to focus on in the short term. And then over a longer term period, we'll be working to set up a collaborative process to work with others to design the research strategy for the project itself. And that type of conversation we'll have through the roadmap process and then open opportunity to work with other stakeholders as we do that. Next slide. And then the last thing I'd say is we are obviously having as to wildlife, as well as fishing industry, fishing interests in terms of what conversations we're having in the work sessions. This doesn't cover all the areas of interest when it comes to where we're citing this. And so the Governor's Energy Office and other state agencies are working on an ad hoc basis with either individuals or groups of people who are interested in talking about other values that should be considered when we're citing this. And so if you know of other, have other thoughts and issues that you want to talk about that don't come up in other work sessions, I would encourage you to feel free to reach out to me. We want to make sure that we consider that when we're making a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Thank you, Amanda. We have a few minutes. If you have any pressing questions for Selena about anything she covered regarding the research array and the charge for this afternoon. I wanted to give us just a little bit. I know many of you I see have been on these sessions before. But if there are people that are new to this, I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity. If you either use your raise your hand function or star nine raises your hand if you're on the phone. I don't see anyone jumping up and down with something that they can't get answered. Oh, so Priscilla, there she goes. Priscilla.
Thank you. Sorry, I was like frantically trying to find the raise your hand on the chat and I use them all the time, but I couldn't do it. So I had to raise my hand. So I just, I have a question. I know you're going to have a fisheries discussion. And then today, you have a breakout for birds and bats and marine mammals. But I wondered about just the, you know, discussion about the broader ecosystem, about Bentec communities, about, you know, just other types of wildlife and how you're thinking about that. Seem to have some very distinctive bins.
Do you want me to take that, Selena?
Yeah. Do you want to take a first cut out?
Sure. Great question. And although it may seem like we have these very distinctive bins, we have them as big bins. So we're trying to bring in everything that we can. And I think I am certain that in the Marine Mammal Breakout, you'll begin to talk about some of those very important things in terms of the habitat. I know in the Fisheries Group, and that's in particularly an area where I think there's going to be an opportunity for crossover conversation when the two groups even come together. So nothing is off the table, but we were just trying to focus a little bit on some of these key areas, but absolutely, those are important things to be considering. I know in the Fisheries Group and DMR in particular is already working that, working those questions as well. So very good point, Priscilla. We'll make sure there's room for that. Pat, did you want to add anything? I see you're popping back up visually here.
Oh, very brief. I mean, Priscilla, you're right. Obviously, the presence of copepods, for instance, could tell us something about marine mammals, potentially bottom matters a lot for where lobstering might happen. So we're going to cover some of those issues. It will not feel as integrated as people would like because of the time we have to pull existing data together to kind of advance this. But one of the things we can explore in the research questions for the researcher rate is getting at some of these broader habitat and ecosystem questions, we think. So.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Tifa. Any other overarching questions that people have as we begin our day? Anything that we missed at the beginning from any of the planning team? Because if not, I think Wing, if you're prepared, we have, so what we've set up is a few experts to talk to us about what do we already, what information do we have about this area? And we are delighted and much appreciative to have Wing Goodall, who's a Senior Science Director at the Biodiversity Research Institute. And Wing is going to present some initial information about, and he's been terrific to sort of look at this area of interest and say, well, what data do we have to start the conversation about maybe areas to explore and other data sets that might be able to be brought to bear as we ask ourselves, where's the where are some of the potential places that this researcher rate could be cited? So Wing, I think we're all set for you.
Great. Can you hear me and see my screen?
I can. And I'll warn you, I'm going to do my little trick that I tried the other day. We'll see if it works. Where the rocks are behind me and as we get closer to the end of your time, the rocks will start to get a little bit closer and and we don't want to crash on the shore. That's our hope. And Pat, you're back on. Did you have something else you wanted to say? Every time you come back on, I always wonder.
No, 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 I'll raise my hand. I was just going to show, you know, I was just going to, you know, do my
Oh, the shark. Yeah.
This is scaring. Okay, got it.
I don't know. I thought I saw crashing on the shore was the mode I'd go for on this one. All right. Wing, take it away.
Thanks. Yeah, when I sort of started, when I ran through this earlier today, I was a little over time. So I'm going to probably leave some things on the table for discussion during the work work session. And so Laura, I'll look for you to wave hands at me or the rock to crush me
Okay.
to know when to stop. So thank you all. Really appreciate you being here today. And I'm going to give a brief overview of first thinking about the potential risks a project can pose to birds and bats, then the data that we have to try to understand those risks. And then how can we use those data to potentially support decision-making? So sort of three steps there. And as we think about data, I think one thing that's helpful is to think about what can we use now for citing? What are areas of the greatest uncertainty that we want to identify and think about how that helps us focus the research questions as we go forward? So first, as just a quick overview here, what are the things that we are most concerned about when it comes to birds and bats? So certainly, the first thing that often comes to mind is a potential collision risk of birds and bats colliding with offshore wind turbines. One thing that's interesting about collision risk is the challenges in being able to monitor the offshore environment. And actually, if you look at the empirical evidence on the number of mortalities that have actually been recorded, they're very, very low, just in numbers of individuals. An area that we have some pretty good information is that there's a host of birds that really don't like offshore wind turbines at all, and they like to just stay away from them. And loons are one of the best examples here of that. And if you look in the upper right here, you'll see the results of some survey efforts that led to modeling that had a before and after of loons around a particular offshore wind farm. And you can, the areas of blue is higher concentrations. And you can see that the birds really moved away from those offshore wind projects. An important footnote on this, and keep this in mind as we go forward, a lot of these, the research that's occurred on displacement of the research that's occurred on displacement of seabirds offshore wind is done on the earlier offshore wind projects that are much smaller turbines, some as little as two and a half, 2.6 megawatts or so. Up to three, 3.6 megawatts are going to be spaced closer together. So as we think about moving to considering offshore wind in the Gulf of Maine, we're going to be larger turbines and we're spaced further apart. Also, there's been some suggestion of these early projects can have a barrier effect. So for migratory birds, they don't like looking at the turbines. So they go around them or over them. And then there are potential for habitat change. You put this new hard substrate in the water, you're going to have new Bentec communities that develop around those. There's just sort of classic artificial reef idea that occurs. And why am I not moving to my next slide? Oh, oh goodness. All right. So I think it's helpful to frame out how we think about adverse effects, because this is very important as we think about citing and how to hone in on species that are potentially most at risk. So there's a very simple model actually comes from the insurance industry in the UK that I find quite helpful in that is thinking about risk with really three components of a hazard, vulnerability and exposure. So the hazard is the physical changes that are occurring to the environment to which wildlife are responding to. So that's the wind turbines themselves. Then there, in order to be at risk, the wildlife birds and bats have to be present. So that is exposure. So are they likely to occur in the area? But just because they're likely to occur in the area does not necessarily mean they're at risk because they also need to be vulnerable. And the vulnerable, vulnerability has different components. We'll talk about that in a moment. And these adverse effects can be direct. This is where you're going to have a mortality or injury. So that's a direct effect. And then there can be indirect, like the displacement or barrier effect. So the animals go around it, potentially lose foraging habitat. So what effect does that potentially have on overall fitness, reproductive success and survivorship? Those become much more difficult to tease out of those potential effects. We also want to think about phases of development. So there's pre-construction, construction, operation, and eventually decommissioning. And for birds and bats, the, the area that we are most focused in on around risk is around the operational phase. There, the construction phase, we can talk about that later is obviously is going to be short. There are some risks there, but for the most part, it's the operation phase that we're most considering about for birds and bats. And we want to think about how birds and bats are going to be exposed both through time and through space. So these animals are highly mobile. Some of them are highly migratory. And so what part of their life cycle are they potentially exposed to the project? So let's think about what do we know about the hazards? So what we really primarily know is from research that's been done in Europe, the with the exception of one project over there, those are traditional fixed bottom type turbines. And so we've learned how birds and bats are responding to those. Now, I think a fair assumption is that from a bird and bat perspective, that the hazards of floating are probably fairly similar to fixed bottom in that you have this structure above water that the, the birds are interacting with. Quite different story from the marine mammal side that we'll hear about later. Potential differences could be a different type of reef effect. A different kind of response in the water around the turbines themselves. Do you have, does it create any sort of micro upwellings? Do you get any micro habitat changes that the birds are responding to? You may have some more perching opportunities than you do on traditional turbines, just because there's going to be potentially more support structure in the water. And then as we talked about, this isn't floating in particular, but has to do with the larger turbines here that these are larger turbines and we spaced further apart. And that is fundamentally different from a majority of the literature in Europe. Then there's unique aspects here in the Gulf of Maine related to species and certainly the geography of the Gulf. So what, what data do we have to get into this question of exposure? So what animals are there when? So the first takeaway is we do not have a large systematic survey across the Gulf of Maine in recent times that can give us a broader context of the planning area in the context of the Gulf of Maine. There have been larger survey efforts to the south and maybe you could answer questions about that later. So what, what do we have? What we do have is we have a mix of smaller scale surveys that have happened in little particular parts of Maine, or you have regional survey efforts that have been associated with other survey efforts such as the Ecomon. This is the V at all 2015 you see here. So those are primarily fisheries surveys, but sometimes wildlife observers go on those vessels and you have AMAP surveys which are larger scale aerial surveys that are out there. So there's this, this mix of different survey data. The, the good news is that these are primarily housed in the North Atlantic, sorry, the Northwest Atlantic seabird catalog, which is database that NOAA has, and it has brought together all the data sets from 1978 to generally to present. So that's where they, all that data resides. So we do have a place where that is. So what can you learn from these individual surveys? Well, you can generally understand differences in temporal spatial use of areas, local abundance, local distribution and local seasonal changes. So we are fortunate that NOAA has taken all this data, because one of the big challenges with this data set is it's over of these, all these small surveys put together. It's over time and over space. You have varying effort, how, which means how much survey was done in an area at a time. So NOAA took all this available data and created the MDAT marine bird abundance and occurrence models. Now these models are available on the portal. If you've gone there and you can explore the planning area in relation to these layers. And so these represent 47 species by season. So you can look at different species by season when they're around. They extend from Nova Scotia down to Florida. And they were developed specifically to help support marine spatial planning efforts and efforts like this that are occurring here in Maine. And their greatest value is providing this overall regional perspective. And it's one of the most important things. If you think about it, you're trying to make assessments about a individual area. It's how birds will potentially exposed to it is providing that broader context. Is this a higher or lower use area for individual species? In the regional context. We have another set type of data and it is individual tracking data. And some of you may be familiar, there's a whole variety of ways that we can put transmitters on wildlife and track them through space. One thing to keep in mind about this type of data is it tends to be focused on particular species in particular areas. And naturally you end up with a small sample size because these types of transmitters and the field effort needed to deploy them is quite pricey. So the question you're always struggling with, with tracking data is, is how well is this representing the population or how well is this representing what these individuals did that we're tracking? That being said, tracking data provides very helpful information on particularly related to migration. And if species are potentially present in an area. So the map here on the right is some Peregrine Falcon data. And so these are some Falcons that my colleague Chris De Sorbo put on down in Down East Maine and tracked them down the coast of Maine. And we'd suspected that these birds are flying across the Gulf of Maine, but didn't have data on that. So now we do, and we see that these animals are flying across the Gulf of Maine in their fall migration. Depending on the type of data you have here, it could also tell you about foraging areas, phenology, which is the timing of how wildlife are moving and leading their lives. But as we talked about, there are issues with overall spatial resolution and sample size. So one challenge that you have with tracking data is when you start having a lot of it, which is good, it becomes really hard to interpret. You can't just throw dots down on a map and start putting lines between them when you have hundreds of individuals from multiple species that you're tracking through multiple years. You get this, just sort of this cluster of dots and it's hard to make sense of it visually. So one way to deal with that is various modeling efforts. And so you'll see different tracking models out there. And this is an example for Northern Gannet. This, this data set is also available on the portal. And this is helpful to provide overall understanding of migration routes and core use areas. And so core use areas are the areas that animals are spending the most time in. And so that's what's useful there. So both tracking data and the models that come from them can be tricky to incorporate in sort of a marine spatial planning kind of perspective because of this variation on the sample size, the area that they represent. And that question on, are they representing the population as a whole? And that's the value of something like the MDAT model. There's also another sort of set of other kind of information that is spatially explicit, but not necessarily in the area of interest and has to do with our overall sort of understanding of coastal use of a different of birds and bats. So we have information on seabird colonies. We have some of which are managed. So we have very very particular information on what they're feeding on, in some cases foraging range. We have information on wading bird rookeries. We also have sort of general knowledge on where are birds staging for migration and, and from that can sort of have some ideas of professional judgment on the routes that they may take. Interestingly, if any of you have watched weather radar in the fall, particularly on cold, cold nights, where there's a Northwest wind, you can use an X-Rad radar to get an understanding of how songbirds and nocturnal migrants are potentially generally and more of a regional standpoint, moving along the coast of Maine. Again, it's harder in a smaller, smaller areas, better for sort of regional understanding. You also have bird banding stations gives you an idea of when birds are moving through. So what can we learn from this? So we can learn where the key seabird breeding colonies, we can know where key listed species are breeding. And these potential areas for migration. So again, that's a little harder to pull into a specific analysis of an area, but it gives you an idea of the overall proximity of potentially sensitive areas to, to the planning area. On bat, on bats, we have even fewer information available to us. The, the best information we have comes from the really fantastic acoustic studies that Trevor Peterson, others at Stan Tech have done along Maine, in Maine and to the south. And these provide really useful information on the species that are offshore. So the species composition, the timing that they're offshore and the movements related to weather. Again, getting down into a specific planning area is most useful on getting us an idea of what species may be passing through the area as a whole and can't really help us look to different parts of that area. And frankly, for a migratory species relative to the Gulf of Maine, the overall planning area isn't that large. So you could sort of assume similar use throughout. Getting to vulnerability, I know I only have a couple of minutes here, so I might just sort of go a little bit quickly through this, but we can get back to it. Is when we think about vulnerability, we need very specific data to understand that. So for collision vulnerability rankings, we need information on density or exposure. Flight heights is really important information on if birds are sitting or flying. Flight speed, which is particularly hard to get at nocturnal activity. And the resources we have there are primarily the Northwest Atlantic seabird catalog and then some individual tracking studies that have been done and the literature. So we have to sort of look to that. Same situation for displacement. We try to look at and gain understanding of macro and MISO avoidance. So MISO is between the turbines and macro is around. And you can see a map here of sort of a classic study done on this. We see the majority of iders are going around a project, but some are going through. So that's your macro and MISO avoidance. We also want to consider habitat flexibility, which means if an animal is going to be displaced, are they a generalist species like a gull unable to sort of move to a different area? Or do they have a very specific foraging needs or habitat use that would make them more susceptible to having fitness issues by being displaced from an area? And finally, we want to think about population vulnerability. So some gulls and cormorants, we may not be as concerned about as listed species such as rosy at turn. So how do we use these data? We can use the MDAT models to look within the planning area. But it's important to note that this is a spatial scale that this data is not necessarily ideal. It's modeled data and we don't have specific data within, within that area. The MDAT models, as I said, are best for thinking about this overall regional perspective on exposure. And you can see that for Razorbill here in the middle of the slide. But from that, you can get this overall exposure score from a regional perspective on which species is this area probably the most important for in relative to their entire range. And I'm just going to quickly keep on going here to the vulnerability side. The area that we're going to want to use data the most is thinking about relative vulnerability rankings. That's several studies that have been done on this. So this is not a absolute vulnerability. This is more of, of the species that we're looking at, which one are more or less compared to each other vulnerable to either displacement or collision. And on the right here, you see a big table from done in Europe. And this was a ranking effort that was done. This is for displacement on the species that are most susceptible to to displacement. In the middle here, you see a main analysis. This gives you an idea of when you start putting this together and how you can use vulnerability analyses to help prioritize which of those MDAT layers we want to consider in citing. And a big X around collision risk models for now, these are very data hungry and there's a lot of uncertainty about information going into that. So you may come across those, but for now that's not a tool that's going to be that useful in trying to look at spatial planning. So what do the MDAT models tell us here?
Is this near the end wing?
Yeah, this is my second and last slide. So we see that for state listed species, species of collision risk, displacement risk and rosy at turn, that there's certainly differences. But if you look within the area of interest, what you see is there's not a lot of variation. The MDAT models are not showing us a lot of variation within the planning area overall. And I'll leave this last slide to as we think, we talk in the, the next session, the workshop session on what are we missing and how can we add to this? So thank you very much.
Wing, that was perfect. And you were almost right on time. So no problems. Zoe, if you could just put us back into our Brady Bunch mode. We have a little less than 10 minutes to give some questions for Wing. If there's something you want sort of clarified that he presented. Certainly as we get into our breakout, we can go a little bit deeper. But some of you might be in different breakout. So wanted to give a little opportunity to ask Wing some questions. Again, if you go down to the bottom of your screen, there's a thing called reactions. It's a nice little smiley face. If you click on that, there's a raise hand function. You can do the Priscilla Brooks route and just wave a lot and hopefully I'll see it. Or if you're on the phone, you can star nine and that raises your hand as well. All right. Jeffrey Smith, please ask the question.
Do you have me, Laura?
I have you.
Thanks. Wing, thanks for the presentation. That was helpful. How are, good to see your face. I thought there was a, a lot of really useful information there. So I, I really appreciate what you shared with us. As I was looking at it, I was struck by how we have some regional data sets and definitely some information that could help us look at areas with relative risk or species with more or less relative risk. But I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit about But I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit about how you feel like these data sets might be able to help us if we're trying to pick a box with inside the blob, for lack of a better technical term, and whether you think the, the data that we have available to us now would allow us to do some of that finer scale sighting to avoid those risks? Or whether there's something else we might need to get in order to be that, be able to really help refine the sighting of this array?
Yeah, great question. We always want more data, right?
Absolutely.
And the question about data sufficiency is sort of always an ongoing question. So I guess one, really the best thing we have to work with are these M DAT models. And we have to recognize that those M DAT models are models, right? They, how are they built? They are built from tying together bird observation data with environmental predictor variables, such as things like distance from shore, changes in bathymetry, primary productivity and a host of other things. So they do have utility in that they are bringing, it's not just, it's relating the birds to these factors that are driving where the birds are going to be. And so I think we have to recognize what those models are, but they're also the best that we have. So the next question would be, would the decision making process be different if there were a series of newer surveys through that area? With, without any doubt, you would have more granular information. The question would be, will that ultimately change the picture? It's hard to say without doing them. But looking at sort of some of those preliminary results from the M DAT models, you do see that there's relatively consistent through that area. And relative to the Gulf of Maine, it's a smaller area, right? So from a bird perspective that are highly mobile, there needs to be a really strong oceanographic feature to draw them to a particular area, like, you know, Stellwagen Bank or something. That is a, or Nantucket Shoals, really clear areas. So that would be something to ask there. Secondly, one thing to keep in mind with those M DAT models, they are, when they're brought together into these different groups, they're weighed the same. So when you're adding them together, when you look at all the birds together, a, a great blackback gull has the same weight in that as a rosy at turn. And I think that's something that is worth considering as you combine these data to understand that area better is do you weigh those layers differently? Basically give greater weight to particular species or species groups that you feel are at greater risk.
Thank you. That was a great, great question and a comprehensive response. Thank you, Wing. Who else up? Priscilla?
Hi, Wing. Thank you for that presentation. I wondered, you know, given the limitations of the M DAT data, because it's at a, a regional scale, are there plans to do some surveys throughout the year out there? So that, you know, at least we can get a baseline of a baseline set of data in the area to help guide the sighting and, and construction?
Great question. And just you know, you were the top of my feed, so I gave my presentation to you. So I'll pass that question back to Laura.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't ready for that. And actually, I'm going to go ahead and pass it back. Well, I'll try it, but then Selena or Meredith, actually, or actually Amanda, if you're on. The answer is in, ahead of determining where to, where to put the, where, what, where to cite the project for the research lease? No, because the, the goal that the state has is to try to put in a research lease application sometime spring, summer here. So, and there wouldn't be time for what you're, what you're talking about. However, as, as you know, because you're familiar with the poem, the poem process is to, once the lease is in, there'll be lots of, there'll be at least a few years before, or I think they're predicting 2025 before anything is actually constructed. And what's the opportunity then to learn more before anything goes in the water? And the goal of the whole project is it is a research project. So what else then can we learn once floating technology is in the water? That further provides more information about this particular area. So hopefully that answers it. I don't know if there's someone else, Selena or Amanda, if you want to elaborate on that, but that's sort of the, the timeline we're on right now. And therefore, what, what we have time for to, to bring just for the sighting question versus the longer term impacts and looking at monitoring question. So those are the two different areas. I don't see anyone else chiming in, so I must have done an okay job. Kelsey? Oh, I think you're still on mute, Kelsey.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
I guess I'll introduce myself first. Kelsey Sullivan, I'm the waterfall biologist for Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. I just, just a question on the footprint. So there's that identified area, but ultimately the, the sighting will be within that area. What's the proportion of the footprint within that larger blob that something would be, be constructed in?
Wing, did you have a response to that? What was the question?
So, Kelsey, good to see you. Well, the question I, as I heard Kelsey is for, so we have the broader planning area, which is 700 square miles or so, right? And then what proportion of that is the 16 square mile block?
Okay, you, you just answered my question. That's all. No, thank you.
Yeah. So for the research array, it's a 16 square mile block within that larger area. So the actual project will be much, much smaller than the blob as it's being called.
Right, but quite a bit smaller. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Any other questions? I did, and I'm sorry, I was a little distracted. If you look at the, at the chat, there were some suggestions there from Kate Williams as well about some other data. And Wing, there was a suggestion that there's something to be learned maybe from the high wind stat oil project evaluation of the next rad data from the gray weather station. So all of those comments are great and welcome, and I appreciate everyone putting them in there so that we can continue to collect information that might be useful to help look at where's the, where's, might be the most, the places that should be avoided. Or as we've said in other forums, sort of a red, yellow, green as we look at this area of interest. Other thing I wanted to point out is that also in the chat is I put in the Northeast Ocean Data Portal. As it's a direct link to the research area of interest that meant much of the data that Wing was showing. And then I know others have, will be showing is on that data portal. I encourage people to look at that. And finally, for anyone who joined us a little bit later, I would ask that you put either an MM or BB in front of your name, if you rename yourself. So we can know which great breakout group to put you in when we do that a little bit later. So if there aren't any other direct questions for Wing this time, I think I will move us along and move over to Sophie Van Parris. And Sophie is the passive.
Sorry, this is bad. There's one question in chat that's probably worth wing answering before we go to Sophie. It should be brief. Don asked a good question about data density.
Oh, there it is right at the end. So Don's question, I don't know if you can see it, Wing is, can you comment on the quality, quantity of bird and bat data for the Gulf of Maine compared to other areas of, of New England? Of the north, of the northeast, really?
It's not great. It's not great, is the simple answer. To the south of us have been substantial large scale surveys. Ones done in Massachusetts, New York and New Jersey, in the mid Atlantic and now South Atlantic bite. So there's been a lot of efforts to the south of us that have done both very high density surveys within particular areas of interest and then put that in a larger context as well. And that's something that we just do not have here in the Gulf of Maine.
We don't have yet.
Yes, I should note that Bohm has identified the Gulf of Maine as an area to do larger scale surveys. And I very much hope that they will be moving forward with that soon.
Great. Thank you for that. And thank you for Pat for being my chat checker. Sophie Van Paris is from, is the passive acoustic program lead at the Northeast Fisheries Science Center. And we asked Sophie if she would help us sort of tee up similarly that, that as Wing did, the marine mammal side of the data that we have about this area of interest. And obviously highlighting where there might be some uncertainty and, and data gaps. So Sophie, I think you're in control of your slides. So whenever you're ready, if you want to bring that up. And as, I don't know if you were here at the, when Wings started, but you'll see the, you'll see the rocks behind me perhaps get a little bit larger as we, as we wind down towards the end of your time. So please, without further ado, share your slides.
Can you see this?
Absolutely. And I can hear you well.
Great. Okay, perfect. So it was great. Wing went before. He gave a lot of background that I did not intend to give. So you've got that. I think in terms of marine mammals and wind energy risks, really the largest ones we're thinking about are things such as vessel strike when going out to the wind, energy turbines for maintenance or other for particularly during construction acoustic deterrents. So any kind of noise that they're producing that could cause damage or injury to marine mammals. And as well as that also just displacement. So those are kind of the things you're thinking about for marine mammals. There's two main types of data that we'll be talking about. Visual sightings as well as passive acoustic detection, so underwater acoustic detections. Just like what Wing was saying, effort in the Gulf of Maine has been quite limited. I think visual sightings have had the most effort compared to passive acoustics. But all of these surveys are really broad scale. And a lot of the surveys, particularly area surveys, are specifically directed at finding right whales and not any of the other species. So the data that you get from the visual sightings is going to be presence of a given species as well as often the ability to calculate the abundance estimate in a given area. Now for the Gulf of Maine, there's regular year round NOAA aerial surveys that cover the entire Northeast US. And so they occasionally cover the Gulf of Maine, depending on the time of year and season. There's opportunistic sightings for right whales that get reported from whale watch fishing and leisure boats, such like. And there's also the vessel based and aerial stock assessment surveys, which is AMAPs that Wing also mentioned. Most of those have been previously focused in the summertime, but more recently, we've actually also been trying to focus in the off seasons, so fall, winter and spring. So what kind of data do we have and where can you find it? For right whales is probably the most detailed amount of information that's out there in visual sightings. There's the right whale sightings advisory system. And you can also do a data call to the North Atlantic Right Whale Consortium, which can give you all the data that's been seen over, you know, a couple of decades for specific region. We've also developed here on the left is a biologically important areas map that looks at all different migratory species as well as resident species. And so here you can see what you've got is I just took a screenshot for right whales. And these designate biologically important areas, which are based on prior and historical visual or any other type of data. So this kind of gives you an idea for the Gulf of Maine, where there's core areas for right whales that have been biologically important in the past. And again, you can look at the different months down the bottom there and kind of look at when those biologically areas are active for, you know, was it a summertime? Was it a wintertime and such like? Here as well, there's a few more. Northeast Ocean Data is another place. Here is where you can start to look and pull out these density maps that have been created, both through AMAPs as well as Duke University has created a number of density layers for the whole Western Atlantic. You can see it on the right here is just a screen grab of the marine cadaster density models, which are the Duke models. Then down the bottom left, you've got some of the AMAPs models as well. Similarly, you can just look up different species, different seasons and look at the likelihood of them occurring in that area. But again, you know, the models are only as good as the data that that goes in there. These are the three main ones that are kind of, I think we, you can look at. So in terms of acoustic data, I'm going to show you, this is an infographic really showing what acoustic data is. There's both two different types. There's archival and there's real time, which is the green circles versus the yellow circles, which the archival. The archival are instruments that you throw out into the ocean and you bring back after a set amount of time. While the green ones are instruments that are out there and that are able to report back the information as they record it or whenever they surface. For example, here in the middle, you've got a slocom glider that dives down, will be recording data. And as it surfaces again, it will send back that information via Orion satellite. And so the different types of data formats for acoustics that are out there that are recording are these real time buoys, these gliders, as well as several of these bottom mounted recorders. So that's kind of what you'll see and what I'll present next. One of the reasons I think acoustics is going to be useful for some of these questions is not just, well, obviously spatial coverage, there is quite a lot of it. And you can see this in that area four is the Gulf of Maine area. But the main reason is that it can record for long time periods in a given location. So you can get a really good kind of 24 hours look at when species are around. And I think when you're trying to hone in on such a small little area as the blob and you're looking at marine mammals who are highly migratory species, at least the large and endangered ones, it's really hard to get an understanding of whether they spend any time within an area or not. But with a passive acoustics, I think you're going to get a really good look and understanding of whether they're there at any point in time. So for the archival data that's out there, this is mostly archival data for acoustics or in real time, isn't readily accessible. You actually need to come to us for this. This is a map, a web map, and the link is there. It's actually currently still password protected. But what this does is it looks back at all the historical passive acoustic data that has been recorded throughout the Western Atlantic, pretty much by any scientist or agency that's been out there recording. You'll see, in this case, it's for North Atlantic right whales. But there's a button here that you can click down. You can look at other species as well. It gives you information on, you know, the different time periods over the years you can select. And you can kind of scroll up to the exact box that you want. So here in terms of that blob area, you can actually go in and hone in on that to see, were there any acoustic recordings? And if so, were there any right whales in that box? You can then change that and look at fin whales, you know, blue whales, micky whales and so on. So what this, what we've done so far in the data that's kind of out there for the acoustics is really largely focused on large whales, the ESA listed endangered species whales. And this is a summary, what you're seeing this map, kind of this heat map going up and down of right whales as they acoustically move up and down the coastline. And you can see in September in the fall time, you can see their acoustic density really increases up in the Gulf of Maine. And then you can see how it kind of settles down. And in the wintertime here, you've got them in multiple different areas. So that's how we use the acoustic data. That information is all in some of both, bunch of these publications too. Here Davis et al. is publication that summarizes 2004 to 2014 data. And you'll give you a better look at the Gulf of Maine. So similarly, a similar look and paper is out there again by Davis, but incorporating all of these other species. And again, just honing into number four here is the Gulf of Maine. And this is really where it shows all the information that's available from the acoustics in that region. One way of looking at that information that we tend to look at, obviously, this is a broad scale. It's the Western Atlantic. It's from up in, you know, the Greenland Strait, Davis Strait and all the way down to the Caribbean, but that area for Gulf of Maine. But that area for Gulf of Maine. So if you look at that, you can really get a good idea of seasonal occurrence via species. And you can just look through, you can look at when different species are around and different seasons. This again is broad scale, right? It's the entire Gulf of Maine. Real time passive acoustics is another data source that's out there and has been out there. Well, actually, just the glider that was out in the Gulf of Maine has just been brought in not too long ago. The real time acoustics is this system like I showed you before. You can either have a slocom glider which dives down into the ocean and sends back information on what it's heard as it comes to the surface. There is moored buoys out there, similarly sending back information as it comes to the surface. And there's also been wave gliders which are self propelled. And so they can actually be out for a long amount of time. The type of information that you get back from real time can be quite diverse. This is all this has been developed by a colleague of ours at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. So you can see the results from the real time monitoring at this robots for whales.huey.edu site. That information is there. It also gets uploaded to Whale Map, which is a site that's run by a colleague of ours in Canada up in Dalhousie. So any of that real time data will go up immediately onto those two sites. You can also get email notifications. So this in terms of a mitigation tool, if you need to shut down anything quickly, or if you need to direct yourself towards what's happening is great. You look at these emails, you get these text messages of yes, there were fin whales here at this time on this day. And similarly, that data gets uploaded to Whale Alert. This is just a quick map to show some of the data that's historically been collected from these real time glider data, these tracks. Basically, the glider will go along along set tracks. It's squiggly because of the ocean currents, but this is kind of the for the Gulf of Maine, that's the extent of what's been covered over the last five to 10 years. Here's another, I just put this slide in. It's a slide I frequently use, but here on the right, you can just see again, this is the glider track that currently every winter is out in the Gulf of Maine. And you can see the detection of say whales, finless humpback whales. And here at the right hand corner, you've got right whale detections. The red show you when we definitely have detected them and the yellow is possibly. One of the things with acoustics is that some of the call types can look like other species. So when we're not totally sure, they get put into this possibly category. What happens in NOAA with this real time information is this is obviously south of the Gulf of Maine. But at the moment, these slow zones are getting put in place whenever any of these real time detections come up. I can imagine that might happen for the Gulf of Maine too, if we get a more routine system going up there. Right now, as of now, we've got eight recorders out. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It only shows seven. I'm not quite sure who anyone's gone to. But I'm out recording full time and they've been recording since January 2020. Listening for all of those large whales here down the table. It just shows the recording time periods and it also shows where we heard right whales, specifically just right whales in this case. And we have actually only heard right whales on one day up in Lubeck. That's why this yellow dot is up there during that time period. So that's also information that's being collected right now. And I think, I think that's it.
All right. Did was there a website or something you wanted to show us?
I can show you. So here we go. Actually, is that still presenting?
Yep, we can see your screen with the passive acoustics citation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. So I was just going to show you this in some more detail for the passive acoustic data. The visual data is just a lot easier to access. This data is only, this is really data we've collated and it's not publicly available as yet. We're working on getting this site publicly available. But I just wanted to show, you know, you can go through, you can choose different species. For example, here we'll can load, see if it happens. Humpback whales, you can then to hone in on whatever area. I'm not quite sure where the blob is somewhere over here, right? And you can hone in on that and it'll only show you the information. For example, here total days detected, it'll show you that information for the area within this rectangle that I just drew. The squiggly lines are the gliders and the detections, obviously, the red squares are when they were detected, green is when they're possibly detected. Over here on the left, you can turn off if you don't like having the glider information there, you can turn that off and just have that simple bottom mounted recordings information there. And you can go into each one of these recorders and see when a species was present and when it wasn't and when it was possibly detected. So this is, I think, going to be quite, this is the Mohegan spot, which I think is really close to the blob. So you can see over time, you can see the different years and dates when right whales were there. So I just wanted to show that quickly because that's definitely available in terms of using for any information that's useful for this sighting and research work.
Great. Thank you for showing us that. That's a lot of information you shared about the data and the types of data that are available. And I'm, well, again, if actually, if you could stop sharing whenever you're ready, I'll open it up to the group. I would note that one of the things for both, the interesting things for both Wing and Sophie's presentation is that both of them had visuals that included monopiles, which is what has been used for most of the offshore wind projects. And in this project, one of the unique factors is that it will be a floating platform, which brings new opportunities for questions and research and and opportunities to learn about how that interacts with the marine environment and the critters in the marine environment in a different way. Anyone want to raise their hand for question? Again, it's on the bottom and I will at some point, I know we do, we have at least one person on the phone. If you're on the phone, you can do star nine to raise your hand. Or ask a question in the chat. So there is a question in the chat, which is, is there information on detection distances for the moored systems or gliders on the website?
There are, not on the website, but there are in scientific publications that we've put together. So I think it depends obviously on the species as to how far away you're going to hear them. I think for right whales, we've kind of determined between both the real time as well as the bottom mounted, you know, on a whole standard kind of 20 by 20 kilometers is a good understanding. And they're kind of your lowest common denominator in terms of the large whale species, obviously dolphin and so are different. But yeah, so there is some detection distance information to go along with it.
Right. Thank you. Jeff Smith.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Sophie. Laura, I know you asked her to stop sharing her screen, but can I ask her to share it again for one quick second?
Absolutely. I just wanted to see. Go ahead.
I was wondering if you could go to your, your first slide there, the first one that had a chart or a map on it, because it looked like you had identified an area that was important. I believe it was for right whales. It might've been for all whales. Looked like it was very close, but perhaps a little bit east of the blob. And I didn't know if you might be able to zoom in on that one a little bit for us, so we could get a sense of the relationship between that green square and the blob we're talking about.
We can't wait. Just let me say, I'll just pull up that website actually, because we can just do it there. I'll stop sharing just for a second. Yeah.
So it looked like the top of Jeffrey's was highlighted as well as somewhere. It looks like it might be Cass's ledge made, but maybe it's closer to Platts and where we're talking about. I couldn't tell.
Yeah. And these are from visual sightings. We're actually redoing this. Sorry, I'm just pulling it up right now. I can share. We're redoing this effort to include new data. So it'll actually include the acoustic data this time as well. This was done 2015 is when we last did this. So sorry, North Atlantic right whales, I will get there. There we go. It doesn't take too long. I think, let me know if you can't see this, right? So there we are. Yes, that's what you're talking about this.
Well, that's Jeffrey's. I was interested in actually in the square that's behind that blue. Yeah, that one. That's the one.
This one? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So that looks like it's east, east of the blob. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
It is. It's the outer falls area. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. It looks like cash is on there too. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sophie. There's a question in the, in the chat, are unmanned aerial vehicles, the drones being used at all for, for monitoring? Do they use drones?
They are only for being used for taking images of health assessment, right? For right whales and other species, but they're not being used standardly. There's a whole bunch of issues with airspace. And such like, and yeah, so they're not being used yet. It's kind of one of those techniques in development.
Got it. Any other questions? I do have a question that's come up in other forums, Sophie, and that is just trying to understand how marine mammals may interact with floating offshore wind turbines. Has there been any research done regarding that? To begin to understand how that interaction may take place?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know how much has been done in Europe, but one of the big issues in marine mammals. If we make, trying to make comparisons between Europe and here is that the species composition is very different. They really have very few species, definitely very few large whale species. So most of their work has been done on harbor purpose and bottlenose dolphins. So it doesn't really relate because they're very different. So not that I'm aware of. No, it's, it's quite interesting actually to imagine how this will differ. I don't know very much about these floating turbines either.
Thank you. I know on the West Coast, they have done a visualization of what humpback whales might, might look like Bohem has done that. I can put that in the website, but I didn't know if you knew of any other more, more current or additional, additional research there. Could anyone speak to sea turtles in the larger potential array area in terms of presence, abundance, seasonality? Is that, is there anyone, is that something that you were able to look at, Sophie? Or does, does anyone else on the line have a sense of if they would be present in this area of interest?
I did ask my colleague, she said there's very little data available. So really didn't have an awful lot to add to it. I know the AMAP survey is supposed to be looking at some, I think, sea turtles that actually have to go to the website to see whether they've actually got enough data to have done anything with that. I'm not sure. There's a lot of issues with doing aerial surveys and sea turtles because they're homeotherms. So basically they, you know, will be underwater if it's cold. And so your sightability really changes depending on water temperature. So this, from what I know, not that I know very much about turtles, that's not very much available. Maybe somebody else knows.
I'm looking for any hands. I did, I would note that Annette has put in the chat that Japan actually has done some monitoring regarding whales that there are two different floating pilot projects they have, and maybe we can get references to those as well. Kate Williams says that, you know, sea turtles might be highly seasonal in this area, summer into fall, when the waters are probably warmest. So maybe not present very, very often. Any other questions for Sophie before we actually all get a little bit of a bio break? Yes, Chris?
I was just going to say that I don't remember the seasonality, but I know there are plenty of leatherbacks in the Gulf of Maine. So it may be seasonal, but at least in that region. Lagerheads don't typically go that far north, but just maybe occasionally, although that could shift with, with climate change. I'm not, I have some, some expertise in turtles, but not, I'm not an expert either directly. So it's my qualified statement there.
Thank you. And I know, noticed that Andrea Aaron's just put a, a link to see sea turtle sightings.org. That has some opportunistic sightings that maybe we can look at. And I would, I would note if there are other naturalists that are out there on the water. It would be interesting to hear if there are any other observations from anyone in the, in the fishing industry or others that are out there on the water and what they've seen in this particular area, whether it be whales or sea turtles. So hopefully we can gain some of that information if people have it to share and we can put that into the breakout as well. But people should be sharing some of that information. Do?
Yep. Can I say one more thing? I do know that Debbie Palka, involved runs the AMAPs program, has been looking into doing distribution models with sea turtles like they have with, with marine mammals. So I think that's something coming, but it's not quite ready yet. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda Downey, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it took me a bit to find the raised hand. Yeah. So leatherback sea turtles are primarily what we see. We kind of expect them around that July, August, September, possibly early October. And like Chris said, the loggerheads are well, but I think it's lack of sighting because they're just not as big as the leatherback. So there is some distribution. We've been trying to work on increasing the sightings for at least the area that we cover.
Got it. And Pat's reminding us again, at the bottom of your screen under reactions, you can click on that. And then there, that's where the raised hand bar is. If you're on the phone, there aren't too many people, but if you are on the phone, please feel free to press star nine or go ahead and press star six and you'll be unmuted. And if you have a question, you can just go ahead and ask. Linda, did you have another question, another comment you wanted to add? Your hand's still up. That's all. It's okay. You'd think after a year, maybe we'd all figure out how to meet in this virtual platform. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm looking for the day, forward to the day where I can share a cup of coffee and see you all in, in person and not in this environment. So if we don't have any further questions, I will quickly also check in with Pat unless I missed a question further up in the chat section. If not, are we good, Pat? I haven't missed anything. Excellent. What we're going to do is take a break for about 15 minutes. Before you break, please put either a BB or an MM in front of your name. And that will allow Zoe to put us into breakout groups. And we should go ahead. And I believe Zoe tried to go into those breakout groups now before we actually leave and go run and get our cup of coffee. Is that what you'd like us to do? Yeah. I see a knot of a head. If you want to help the rest of us navigate through. And if you are not wanting to enter breakout group, I, and take a longer break because you just don't have anything to share and you're just listening in, please, please do so. At around four, we're going to report back. So you give yourself a longer break. If you want to just sort of hear the reports back from the breakout groups. That's great as well, because I know we have a lot of people on that are observing and just taking in all this information as it, as it comes onboard for all of us.
Great. So we'll send you to breakout. And just so if anybody's left in Plenary and doesn't know quite how to get to where they want to go to, then, then during break, Zoe can help you out. So that's why we want to go to breakout now. And then again, you'll just go automatically, you can still take your coffee while you're sent to virtual space. And then just make sure at 3:15 you are back. So we can dive into the conversations because we want to get a lot of good stuff done pretty quickly. So we need to start right on time.
Great. Okay. You will all see a message to prompt you to your breakout groups. And Laura and Pat, as hosts, I will ask you to, to go to your respective groups yourself, because I can't assign you. You're on mute, Pat.
Why we just go pick ourselves? I see. Okay. So I just assign and see.
Yeah, I have you down.
At all as they go there and then.
And Laura for Bruce.
And how do I actually, so this is pathetic. I should know this. How do I, oh, I see. Nevermind. I got it.
Yeah, that is in the more and then.
It's in the joint part.
Great. Okay. And Carl, I saw your message. I'm going to move you to marine mammals. Selena, let me know which group you'd like to join. And then just the folks left here in Plenary. David Trim and Carol Woodcock, I don't have which room you'd prefer to go to if you'd like to go to one.